Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This turnout has far exceeded anyone's expectations, I think. And that's wonderful that we can come together to address and try to solve a problem that we know exists, and you know, there's no easy solutions. So with that, City Manager Mike Scragg will introduce staff who will make introductions of our guest. And following her presentation, we will have a question-answer session, and we will limit your comments to three minutes so we can get through as many questions as possible, and we will keep it cordial and civil. So with that, City Manager Scragg.
Thank you, Mayor Longmine. I'll keep my comments brief, but just want to provide a little bit of an explanation. As you, as the commission, know, we typically have what we call study sessions before a regular meeting. That's really just kind of an informational session, not intended to be a decision point, more just a presentation by staff or others on a topic of interest. We've been talking about homelessness for quite some time. Staff has been looking at best management practices, doing the readings that we can. Appropriate staff or applicable staff have been attending conferences, reaching out to their peers, and I'll let them kind of explain how it is that we made contact with the presenter today. But I asked them, rather than us trying to be the subject matter experts, is there a subject matter expert out there that would be appropriate to address you? And so tasked them with trying to find someone that could help us with that conversation and our deliberations. And so Lauren Driscoll and Michelle Martin. Lauren's the Director of Community Development Services. Michelle Martin is the Community Relations Director. They've been the two primary individuals working on it in that regard. I'll turn it over to Lauren. She can kind of explain how we made contact and tell you about our presenter tonight.
Thank you. As City Manager Scragg mentioned, we have been on a learning journey this last year, and as a community, we're going to continue to learn about a very complicated issue, which is homelessness or the unhoused. And tonight is just kind of one more step in learning more and understanding more. And as part of that, over this last year, both Michelle and I have attended various conferences and started to understand kind of the inner workings, both at the federal, state, and other communities around us, of how they're addressing homelessness, what resources are out there, and what other communities are doing, and how do we take the resources that both the feds and the state have and bring them home to Salinas so that they can help our community? As part of that journey and working with the Continuum of Care, COC, and the Homeless Coalition from the state level, Michelle and I heard about resources through KADADs or the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability, and through that program, learned a little bit about Julia Orlando, who's going to be speaking tonight. Julia is the Director of a nationally recognized and award-winning Bergen County Housing, Health, and Human Services Center in New Jersey. And through her job there, they were able to address homelessness in a way that brought it down to what they call functional zero. So those that needed to be housed could be housed. She's going to talk more about that tonight, so I'm not going to take away the best part of that story. But in addition to that, Julia has also been a Certified Rehabilitation Counselor, Certified Disaster Response Counselor, and a Mental Health First Aid Trainer. She's passionate about changing, being a change agent, and an effort to create stigma-free communities, and a Certified Rehabilitation Disaster Relief Counselor, as I mentioned. Julia is going to go through that, but I also want to introduce Ashley Argonbright, who is with KADADs from the state. She is the Housing First Project Coordinator for the state and is part of what brought Julia. So Julia actually has a contract with the state, and she's meeting with lots of other communities around Kansas, kind of bringing her resources. Julia met with different providers in our community earlier today and can also act as a resource to them. So the different shelter coordinators, the different providers, if they've got questions as a resource from the state and from KADADs, Julia is there to help. So Ashley is also going to be explaining a little bit in the presentation about the state's role and what resources they have for helping people with mental illness and addiction and housing. And with that, I'm going to let them get started. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Is that good? Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. I can't believe this room. This is amazing. This is standing room only. And what that tells me is that this is a community that's interested in solving this problem. If I come to a room and it's empty and people are not there, I think maybe the community's not ready. This tells me your community is ready. You have people in the room. You had a packed room full of providers today, stakeholders, law enforcement, city officials in the room this afternoon, problem-solving, collaborating, working together. That's what this work is going to take. I'm going to take you on a journey of the work that we've done in Bergen County. I'm going to share some best practices for you. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm here to inspire you. I'm here to tell you that there are solutions. There are things that you are already doing. There's things that you can be doing, and there's things that you can be doing together in the way that you're working together. But homelessness can be solved. And not just in my community, there's communities all over the country that are doing this work. I also think it's important for you to know that I'm under contract with KADADs. I have a contract here in Kansas for three years. I'm a year and a half into a three-year contract. If I'm invited to come into a community in Kansas, I come. Snow didn't keep me here. My illness, I ended up getting COVID early December. I had to, you know, cancel and come back. I was determined to get here so that I could deliver this presentation to all of you, to give you hope and inspiration that you can do this work. So with that, I'm going to get started. Homelessness is solvable. That's really the message tonight. And what do we know? And how can we do this work? I read an article before I came because I like to do research on my communities before I visit them. And I like this a lot. Behind all of this mess that we see, there's a person behind it. There's someone who's going through something that he doesn't know, or she doesn't know, how to get herself out of. It brings the humanity right back, and it's important for us to do this. And this is Chad Young, who's your Executive Director here for your rescue mission, and Salina Grace, and I think he's here tonight because I did see him. Where is he? Where are you? There he is. No seat? There's a seat right in front here. Okay. And I told him he can call me anytime to help him because, you know what? The shelters are a central part of this work. Your shelters, right, are, for many people, the first light of hope that things can get better for them. I don't know how that ended up there. It's okay. Complexity demands adaptive leadership strategies. So basically, what am I talking about? On issues of homelessness, we want to have a person to blame. We want to look at the shelter and say, you're not doing what you're supposed to do. We want to look at the police and say, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. We want to look to our officials and say, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. This is a complex problem, and what do I mean by that? Building a rocket would be very complicated, right? But you know, there are actually blueprints of how to build a rocket. And if you get to the end of it and you follow it correctly, guess what happens? You have a rocket. Homelessness is a lot like that. It's complex, and a complex problem requires a complex solution. So what that basically means is that if you want to solve this problem, every single person in this room has to be part of that solution. Everyone. And it doesn't mean everyone in the room telling somebody else how to do it. It means everybody understanding the role they play in that, and everyone having a shared goal collectively of ending homelessness. So this includes everyone, the individual, the family, right, the governing bodies, all of this, all these people together making this progress. The first thing that's most important about this is communication. That's what we're doing tonight. That's what we did this afternoon. We spent several hours together having real conversations about what was working, about what was not working, about what is needed, about how to work differently, what we hope will accomplish. Those are conversations that have to happen often because someone this afternoon said, this was great, but how do we keep this momentum going? That's how you do that. You have to keep the communication. You have to create opportunities for that communication. You have to keep it at the center of the conversation. Second, a shared focus and a desired outcome. There's a difference between not seeing homeless people anymore and housing homeless people. Do you understand that? Okay. That's the biggest difference because we all care about homelessness, but we struggle with homeless persons. We struggle in communities, every community. But this piece is very important. Do you want to not see homeless people, or do you want to end homelessness? Because if you want to end homelessness, that's a different shared goal, and it's going to be hard and complicated and frustrating, but that's a different kind of goal. And when I talk about that, what's the option, other option, is managing homelessness. Managing homelessness is things that feel good and normal to us, that feel like putting people in a shelter, feeding people on the street, giving them money. That manages homeless. Ending homelessness is making sure that people go back to housing. It's really the only solution. But that sounds really scary and overwhelming for people, so let's take that journey together of the things that we can do to help people get to that point. And last, when we get stuck, how do we get unstuck? So that when someone in the community that's a provider, that's somebody who's working with people, and they get stuck, how do we help them get unstuck? When they hit a barrier, like we heard today, I know some of the people were talking today, and I had conversations with them. I have an idea. This is something I've learned along the way about how to deal with that issue, helping people get unstuck. I just, from here, you know, because we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, the system, but I want to focus here on the shared vision, and I'm just going to keep talking to you about that. When you, if I were to ask you right now to envision what ending homelessness would look like, what would that look like in your head? I know something about this community already. You not only want to have people not be homeless, you want to see them have better lives. That's important. That's an important value shared in this community. That's why I know that you talk about educational programs, vocational programs, getting people back on the right track. That's an important value. And that's beyond even housing. That's really wanting people to have better qualities of life, and that's a very important value that I think a lot of you share. Greg Colburn has written this book. Anybody read it yet? Okay, a few people have read it. Kudos. It's on Audible, too, if you want to just listen. This is a very important book because this book was based on research in some of the most, you know, problematic areas in our country around homelessness. And they did research to find out why. Why does California have so much homelessness? Why does New York City have so much homelessness? What's going on? Are they just not trying? Do they not have services? Why are they experiencing these high levels of homelessness? So what they found was that in cities with large homeless populations, they share characteristics, these two characteristics. One, they have a significant growth population, right, but have not added enough housing to meet the new demand. And why do people, why are people coming to these cities? For jobs, quality of life. So any place people want to live, the demand for rent, right, will go up. Secondly, the increasing demand for housing and Mr. constrained supply of homes reduces vacancy rates, increases rents, squeezing low-income and vulnerable populations out of the housing market and into homelessness. So stay with me. Poverty, unemployment, domestic violence, mental health, and substance use increase the probability that someone will experience homelessness in their life. Increase. There's a difference between that and saying that they're causative. There's a half a million people homeless in this country. There's a lot more people suffering from mental illness. They're not all homeless. And we'd like to think that that's the major driver, but many, many people live with mental illness and housing. Twenty-five to forty percent of individual unhoused people have a substance use disorder with around of a quarter of unhoused people experiencing some form of mental illness. The chronically homeless population is also more likely to use illicit drugs, consume high levels of alcohol, and suffer from mental illness compared to those people with stable housing. Personal attributes that make individuals susceptible to discrimination, such as race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, and disability, also increase the possibility that a particular person may become homeless. Stay with me. This is what they found. The difficulties in building housing in certain places drive the higher incidence of homelessness relative to other jurisdictions, right? So in these places where they've studied, it was harder, right? They're very densely populated. It's very difficult to build housing. As communities add jobs, they have economic growth, more people seek to live in them. In the absence of lots of housing being built in response to that, you now see this inflow of new people, population growth leads to an increase in rents, increase all levels of the market. This is the point, the last point. This dynamic interacts with the individual characteristic to exacerbate, right, make worse the risk of homelessness for certain groups. In other words, people whose circumstances or attributes make them more likely to fall into homelessness are particularly vulnerable to the impact of those housing constraints. So very simply said, what this means is that in the competition for very little housing, they have the least chance of getting it. It is not, it's not seeing it as causative. In other words, if we see mental illness and substance abuse disorders as being the drivers between homelessness, we would have much greater homelessness across the country and the world. This means that people, yes, have mental illness that we're talking about, and yes, have substance use disorders, and because of that, the very little housing you have access to, they're the least likely to get it. I hope that makes sense. This is just a little bit about data on housing shortages. The U.S. underbuilt housing by 5.5 million and 6.8 million homes over the last 20 years. This acute housing shortage impacts low-income households the hardest, right? So this is a lot of math here, but basically what we're saying is this has a tremendous impact because for very low-income households, the people we're talking about, people who less, who earn less than 50% right of the area median income, which is 36 homes. So homelessness increases at a faster rate in places where people spend 32 more, or percent or more of their income on housing on average, a signal that higher rents seem to drive increase in homelessness. Homelessness is a housing problem. It's a housing problem. So how do we, what do we do about that? When I was in Wichita, I worked in Wichita with the United Way of the Plains for about six months, and my first presentation for them was in a place called the Kansas Leadership Center. Have any of you been there? Is this not the most spectacular place? And if anybody in here is a public speaker, to have the privilege to speak in that environment, it was unbelievable. So when I was finishing my talk there, I noticed that they had these books. And I went home and I Googled them, and I found these books, and I ordered them. And they're phenomenal, and they do trainings. They do training on leadership. So this is kind of their big area that they talk about, which is adaptive leadership. And I recommend anybody in this room that's doing this work to do some training on adaptive leadership. But I want to take you to the first top, right? The activity of mobilizing people to tackle tough challenges and thrive is what we're doing right now. It's what you're doing right now, adaptive leadership. Bringing us all together, recognizing that before the real work of implementing and sustaining this change, you must first prepare hearts and minds and allow space for exploration and processing in order to move past various potential forms of resistance. If you're not in it with the people here who are trying to change this, if you fight it, we're not going to make movement here. Adaptive leadership is really understanding how we all play a role in solving problems and moving progress forward. I recommend you can get these on Amazon. They have fantastic books on leadership. So everyone needs to understand the relationship between loss and change. Why it's so hard for us to maybe agree with what I'm talking about or think about homelessness differently is because when we do that, we give up something. We don't like to give up something. It feels risky. It feels uncomfortable. Because we believed about something a certain way for so long, it's hard for us to think differently. Change happens faster when a critical mass of people connect accepting loss with making progress on their most important challenges. So if together we agree that we're going to work in a certain way, we lose less if we're working together, right? It's like if somebody's going to take the blame with you, so to speak, you feel less like, okay, well, if we're going to do this together, it's not going to be me alone. You help people manage that risk. Once people understand that connection, they're more likely to exercise leadership in their own, to help name, understand, and mitigate the loss that comes with change. And believe it or not, this is really where we get stuck on this area. When everyone leads, we help each other navigate loss. So you don't have to be in here and be the Executive Director of an organization. Every single person sitting in a chair can be a leader in their respective place and have influence on people around them. Just the way you talk about people experiencing homelessness makes a difference. The words we choose make a difference. The things that we think are important make a difference. Those little changes can have a profound impact. So when no one leads everywhere, no one leads everywhere, so we need everyone leading somewhere. I'll just give you example what I mean by this. I run a shelter. It's cold, cold like it is tonight. A woman was at a church one night. It was very, very cold, and mass ended, and this man left the church to go back to the park to sleep. She just couldn't do it. She's like, I just, I just can't do this. So she convinces him to come to the shelter that night. And I get a call like 11 o'clock at night, and the staff is so excited because this man is at the shelter, and they're calling me, and they're like, I can't believe this. I said, okay, well, great, just bring him in. But who brought him to us? And they took her name and her phone number. So I called her the next day. I said, you know, we've been trying to get him in for a very long time. How did you do this? And she's like, well, he knows me because we go to church together, and he trusted me, and he came with me. And I said, would you like to be on my committee to end homelessness? And she said, well, I don't really know anything about ending homelessness. I'm like, I think you do. I think you do. Another example, I had a pastor in the community call me, and he said, Julia, I want to give out blankets tonight to people. Will you tell me where they're sleeping? And I said, no. And he said, what? And I said, sorry, but no. I said, but I'll tell you what. If you find somebody sleeping outside, I guarantee you they get a bed in the shelter, anybody you bring to me. That's the deal. And he said, okay. And he went out and he found a homeless veteran, and he brought him in. The next day, I called him up, and I said, I'd like you to join my veteran committee. And he said, I don't know anything about ending homelessness. And I said, I think you do. And we started to have people from the community, everyday people, who understood what we were trying to do, that the first step for many of these people, yes, was shelter. But in understanding about not working in the traditional way that we think, like giving blankets, I don't want people to give blankets. I want them to get out of the cold. I don't want to give someone food outside. I want them to come into my shelter and have a meal in a community with other people and get connected to much-needed services. So it's about not saying that we don't do these things, but that we do them, do them together with a single purpose. A clear purpose will unite you as you move forward. Values will guide your behavior, and goals will focus your energy. Ken Blanchard. I'm a very big quote person, but I think this really speaks to having a clear purpose. When you leave this room tonight, having a clear purpose as a community. Bergen County, 40 years ago, churches, faith-based groups, social service agencies working to end homelessness did the best they could. But just like here, no matter how much you're doing, it just became too much, and we needed to do something different. There's a national call to action. Chronic homelessness was identified as a national problem. Secondly, HUD calls for the development of a comprehensive approach. He basically says, if you're going to continue to get money from the federal government, you're going to have to do things a little bit different. And the difference was, we were required to coordinate and integrate homeless programs with other mainstream health, social services, and employment programs for which homeless populations may be eligible. So what Bergen County does is they say, they hire a consultant, the consultant does 200 interviews with stakeholders and asks each one of them, what do we need to be different? Just like we did today, just like we did today. If we were going to do something different, what should we do? But the thing that that consultant asked at the end of those interviews is, and when we do this, will you be part of this? You need that commitment. Are you going to come to the center? Are you going to be providing services? Do you agree and commit to that? That's an important part. You can't just tell people what to do and how to change it and then not agree to be a part of it. So that agreement was a very, very big part of why this was important, and I'll tell you why, too. Because you don't want for something to be created that's going to replace all the services you provide here. Communities aren't going to welcome that. What you want to do is create a place where the people in the community can work together if they share that shared vision. That's an important piece. What were our challenges? Some of these might seem familiar to you. Resources, a nice word for money, but how are you going to pay for this? Resources is always a challenge. Two, Ashley's Housing First. She's going to talk in a few minutes. My community did not, not only did they not like the idea of Housing First, they wrote letters, nasty, aggressive, hostile letters about why they didn't want to do this. But Housing First is a national model. It's a best-practice model. It was then, it's still now. It's had a lot of scrutiny, and the reason it has scrutiny is because, let me be really clear about what it is and what it isn't. Housing First is not taking a person and putting them in housing and leaving them there and not helping them. That is housing only, and no one recommends that. Housing First, it's putting a person into housing quickly and without barriers, but wrapping services around them to help them stay in that housing. That's very different than putting a person in housing and not providing case management. Community mindset focused on managing homelessness versus ending it. Some people are afraid of that. Well, if we end homelessness, then, you know, am I not going to have a role here? Or what we do is going to be different. People are very comfortable with managing homelessness. Ending homelessness was a very hard concept. It's hard to tell people that going out into the street and feeding people is not a good thing because it feels like a good thing, and it's a really good shot of dopamine, and we feel really terrific, and then we go home, that person's still outside. We have to feed people, but is there a better way to do that? We have to shelter people. Is there a better way to do that? It's about really thinking about, how can we do that together? So in the shelter that I am the director for, groups from Family Promise come in every single night and serve dinner in our setting. It's a beautiful thing. 300 churches, synagogues, mosques, moose groups, rotary clubs, every night bring in dinner, every single night. So they're still doing this, but they're doing it in a facility where people are warm and people are safe and people are working on getting to housing. Fear of change, that's a big one. That's when you have to tackle. Changing the way we do things, changing the way maybe our policies are. Working with people a little different. It's very uncomfortable to change the way we work when this has been what we've always done. And then lastly, we have investment. When we ended veteran homelessness, when we reached function- When we ended veteran homelessness, when we reached functional zero, one of my partner agencies called me and I thought she was calling to congratulate me. And she said, she's screaming at me, we're going to lose our funding. I'm like, excuse me? We just reached functional zero for veteran homelessness. She was concerned she was going to lose funding. No one's going to cut your funding on if you're doing your job. If you're ending homelessness, you'll get more money. If you're effective, you're going to get more support. If your outcomes are good, you're going to get more donors. People don't want to give to something that's not working. Doing this right helps everybody. Very quickly, 2002, we analyze our existing shelter. We had four shelters at the time. 2007, the county collaborates with United Way to develop housing works. So we do a pilot, just to see how it works, work out the kinks. 2007, our county funding is aligned and we decide to build one center because we are a suburban environment right outside of New York City. We do a one-stop. We're going to have a one-stop facility. 2008, the county develops a tenure plan to end homelessness. 2009, we open the center, which I'm going to talk about in a second. And 2010, I developed the Hackensack Collaborative Outreach because the community is outraged that we put a 27,000-square-foot program for the homeless in their county seat. They were livid, angry, scared. So my response to that was to help them understand how this was going to help their community. That was on me. So I developed this outreach, which was every three months with business owners, library, law enforcement, community members, advocates, everybody, every three months. Tell me what's working. Tell me what's not working. Tell me what we need to do. We were communicating, all of us. Every three months and actually every day in a lot of ways, but I gave them an opportunity and I told this earlier. My first meeting, I needed to have police escort. Five years later, I was their citizen of the year. Whenever anybody in my community has someone about to become homeless, has an addiction issue, struggling with mental health, they send them to us and we help them. We've become a support to our community. And not only that, we welcome them in to be part of the work that we do. You want to serve a meal, come on in. You want to do a bingo night, do a bingo night. You want to do a book club, do a book club. You want to do financial literacy, come on and teach that. Everybody's welcome. Everybody's welcome. Just a little bit about our COC, because you're going to learn about that today. Major contributors to our tenure plan, helped us identify our goals, developed our coordinated entry system, and the development of our permanent housing. This is what political will looks like. This is what a shared vision looks like. This is beautiful. This is a shelter. This is a 27,000-square-foot building owned by the county of Bergen. People don't think it's a shelter when they drive by it. Is it on the outskirts of town? Nope. It's right down, right couple blocks, like two blocks from Main Street. And it's across the street from the jail. When inmates are released and they're experiencing homeless, they come right over to us, we do in-reach into the jail. That's a priority population for us. This is a shared project between the county of Bergen and the Housing Authority of Bergen County. Our mission is to end homelessness, provide a full continuum of housing services, prevention, temporary shelter, and permanent placement. This was designed to be a shelter for 90 people, an additional 30 during cold winter like we have now. We're open every day. So what that means is that a person experiencing homelessness can be in shelter, wake up, have breakfast, be in the drop-in program onsite, have lunch, be in the drop-in program in the afternoon, have dinner, be onsite, go to an AA meeting, be in some kind of group that's going on, go to sleep, wake up in the morning. If they're working, they can come in late, they get passes. If they're in treatment, they can get a pass for that. You know when they can't leave after 6 o'clock if they're doing nothing? You can't be out. You can't be out being a problem to law enforcement, can't be out because I don't want to hear anyone from the community blame anything on my people. So you're working, you're in treatment, you have to see your parole officer, probation officer, you have, you know, DCP and P, you're going to see your kids, we're okay with that. It's your birthday, you want to stay out till 11 o'clock? No. And then they'll say, how come I can't stay out on my birthday? And I say, you know what, you can stay out on your birthday? And they say, in my own apartment. I go, that's right. So let's get to it. Get out of here faster and you make the own rules. The idea is that we're helping the people that we're keeping in this facility, but we're also working to help our own communities. We are a command center, so Board of Social Services onsite, lawyers onsite. People don't even have to leave the building to meet with the people that they need to meet with to get the things that they need. Now, if they want to leave the building, of course they can, but they don't have to. So what's great is that if you're seeing the Board of Social Services and you're trying to get food stamps, you're trying to get welfare, and oh, I don't have this document, you're in the building. You can go to your room and you can get your document. So people getting their benefits went up 90%. People were getting food stamps for the first time. People were getting welfare for the first time. People were getting Medicaid. People were getting access to benefits. We also have nurses onsite. We brought veteran services onsite, recovery specialists, vocational services, I have a full-time vocational coordinator. Every single person who comes in gets evaluated for work, if they want to work, if they're eligible to work. And if they are working, we're going to check out where you're working. We're going to make sure, right, that, you know, are you working off the books? Do you need help? Are you underemployed? We talked about that this afternoon. How can we help you increase your income? Best practices of a low-barrier shelter and housing-focused system. So this is going to be a little tough talk, okay? You need everyone to be able to access shelter. And if they can't, you need to figure out where the people that are getting barriers, you're going to have to figure that out. Not everybody's going to meet your criterias for your program. That's why many of them are still outside.
That's right.
Okay? So that doesn't mean that's easy. I can tell you, I've done this for 14 years. I've done those long hours. I've had those difficult clients over and over, people who get aggressive, people who are not well. You need a shelter. You need somewhere for these people because they're not going to get any better not being sheltered. It's very, very hard for law enforcement to have a person that they can't bring somewhere. You need your law enforcement out doing the other things you want them doing. But if they're spending one or two hours with the homeless person because they can't get in anywhere, they've become social workers, not police officers. So we have to think about, you're doing a great job in sheltering and assisting many, many people, but you're not here tonight to hear about those people. You're here about the people who are not being helped by the people you're concerned about, the people who frighten you or you're worried about them. We need a solution for those folks. And you all have to be part of that decision. And I'm going to tell you about what you don't want to decide to, and we're going to talk about that also. We used Housing First. Do we use Housing First for everybody? No. For our folks that were the most chronic, the most resistant, the most difficult, we did Housing First for them. It was the only solution. And it was scary at first, right? It's scary because it doesn't feel like what we're used to, but it works. It does work, but it takes a lot, a lot of dedication from staff and case management to work with people and to be, and to help them through those steps. I just want to go to the bottom here. Setting and holding partners accountable. I'm the person who does that. I get less and less Christmas cards every year. It's okay. But when we're going down our by-name list, our coordinated entry, and I see somebody and they, it's taken month after month, they're not housed. Why? What's going on? What's the problem? Because number one, if I can figure out the problem, I'm going to help, but I also need to hold that person accountable. Because what I see in our system sometimes is we put up barriers. And we need to be responsible for those barriers and we have to work to get rid of those barriers. Just going to really quickly, this is what our system looks like. It looks very complicated. It really isn't. It just basically shows you how people come into contact, how we do our coordinated entry, people come in through our drop-in program, our street outreach, how people are connected. But basically what I want you to see here is, you don't have to be in shelter to get housed. Even if we have people that refuse, absolutely don't care, don't want, won't go, won't do, their name is on a list and we're housing them. And those people are at the top of our list, not the bottom, at the top. Those people are even ahead of people in shelter. It's a hard concept. We have housed people from their cars, who, and many of them are women, actually, who just absolutely refused, won't come, even though we have shelter beds that are just for females, they refuse to come. We talked about this this afternoon. Collaboration. I work for the Housing Authority. You all know what the Housing Authority does, right? We do housing. Housing. We provide management of the center, we provide vouchers, we prioritize people experiencing homelessness, we do facility management, and we interface with the Board of Social Services. Christ Church, this is one of my closest partners, this is a faith-based group, they run the shelter operations. They run our drop-in program through radical hospitality. Who knows what radical hospitality is? The concept of radical hospitality. So basically, we call our people at our shelter guests. They're guests. They're not residents, they're not consumers, clients, they're guests. So we have a culture where we treat people as guests. But understand this too. If you're a shelter guest, I expect you to be a good community guest, which means if your behavior is bad in the community, you have to deal with me, not the police, not everybody, they have to deal with me. I expect people to behave a certain way, they're being well cared for, well taken care of, there's an expectation. And we talk with them about that. They don't get arrested, they don't get citations. In fact, they'd rather have citations than have to deal with me. And they have said that. But I'm like, hey, listen, if you're panhandling, why are you panhandling? What's going on? We're feeding you three times a day, you don't pay to stay in the shelter, what do you need? What's going on? Is this an addiction? Is this an issue? Is this what's happening? We're dealing with it therapeutically because being with us is a value to them. And it's a conversation that we have with people. Our Bergen County Jail across the street, this is a priority for us. We do in-reach to the jail to make sure that anybody coming out experiencing homelessness is prioritized. This is our county hospital. Our county hospital provides our detox, provides our psychiatric inpatient, outpatient, and ambulatory care. Our relationship is key. If I have people, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this, I didn't say this this afternoon. When someone comes to me and says, I'm ready to go to detox, they go same day. I don't play. I don't play. I don't. When people are ready to go to detox, they got to go to detox. So I worked very, very hard to make that, we even have the point where they come pick them up from the shelter, so we make sure that they get there. This is our county executive. Our county executive, this is our political will. Make sure that we have what we need to operate and do this work year after year. This is our mayor. Our mayor was skeptical in the beginning. I had to do a lot of work, you know, I had to do a lot of work to show him our value. I think it happened when there was a fire in the city and 15 families all lost everything. And I saw it the next day and I said, have you ever read the book, The Tipping Point? This was my tipping point. I said, okay, I'm going to call this, I'm going to call. I said, can I help? They're like, please come up here. We had people who had very serious medical additions, their medication was in the fire. People who didn't speak English. It was a disaster. They not only, you know, we had one man, it happened over a restaurant. We had one man, he worked in the restaurant as the maître d'. He lived in the apartment above the restaurant and he just became a citizen three months before that. And everything was gone, his job, his home, his papers. And helping these folks rebuild, but my point was this, we're a shelter. I said, let me take this over. It's disaster relief. You all heard I'm a disaster relief council, right? Homelessness is a disaster. It's a disaster. So you treat it like a disaster relief. So I spent, I had Excel spreadsheets, we triaged all the families, got everybody back where they needed, got their IDs, got things taken care of, and I reported that up to the city, the mayor, city council, churches, whoever was guiding this effort. My point is this, it changed how they saw us. Because homelessness happens to our neighbors, to us, to our families. It's not that people experiencing homelessness migrate into our communities, many of them fall into it. So your response, you have to understand that and treat it like that. So what we did for our community was we were able to provide things that they couldn't. They didn't know how to do all that. Right? Disaster relief is usually like, you know, one or two days, but rebuilding people's lives, that's a different level of commitment. And we were able to do that and things then started to change. And I think they see us now where any business owner, sometimes they'll have someone in their business who's now struggling with addiction or homelessness or mental health, they call, we help. Whoever calls, we help. The message is this, we're here to serve your community, to help everyone in whatever way that we can. Our business, this is our business partnership. I just want to show you this. Basically, what we're trying to do, from what I've shared with you, are you starting to see that we're helping the person, but we're also helping the community? And you can find a way to do both those things by really listening and really working When, my first day on the job, my first week on the job, I went up to the business district and I said to them, what's your goal as a business district? And they said, we want to revitalize Hackensack. And I thought, oh my God. I thought, oh my gosh, that's like the biggest goal ever. This is revitalization. And if you talk to any people on that business district, you know what they're going to tell you? What an impact we had on that. Because people aren't sleeping on the streets or the benches or in the library. We made a very, very big difference because I made it a priority for us. And now, they're able to do all of this, this new construction and new building in Four reasons why you should support repealing anti-panhandling laws and replacing them with housing, jobs, and services. I'm not going to preach to you, but I'm going to tell you this, it doesn't work. You cannot criminalize your way out of homelessness. You cannot arrest your way. You can't.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so here's a few reasons why. So I gave you the studies, I gave you all the research. People try all different things and creating, you know, benches that are spiked and water that comes down. Criminalizing homelessness doesn't end homelessness. And it's so cruel. And you're not cruel people. And this is about adaptive leadership. Wear your hearts and your mind on this issue. You can't lose sight of that in problem solving. If we could arrest people out of this, we would have done that. Many, you know, there are other states, your neighbors are doing this. And they're just moving those people to someplace else, they're not solving it. It's not going to go away and you can't criminalize it out. So I just want to make sure that I say that tonight. These are alternatives. Alternat- these are alternatives. Community-wide planning. Develop partnerships. When law enforcement in my community sees someone, they bring them down to us. The business folks all have my number. If someone's in their cafe, or in their restaurant, or whatever, and they're concerned, I sound an outreach worker. I respond. It's an effort. There's ways to do this that are much more effective. Encouraging those collaborations between law enforcement, behavioral health, and social service providers. And this is a little more sophisticated, but specialty courts, citation dismissal programs, public defender's office and reentry, really to provide alternatives to incarceration. We use a lot of those as well. Getting to zero takes political will, leadership, collaboration, and coordination among multiple state and local programs to align resources for housing and supportive services. This is functional zero. We have less people entering than we have leaving. That's the metric. If you have, right? Do you have more people entering homelessness in your community than exiting? You're saying yes? Okay. Right? You want the opposite. You want to be housing people more than they're coming into your system. Ashley, we're like really tight on time, but you wanna come up here really quick with me? Balanced state of continuum of care. You wanna just say briefly what this is, so they know?
Yes, the continuum of care, for you guys, it is truly the-
Do you wanna stand up from the mic?
There you go.
It's being recorded, so. I'll go this way.
Okay. So the continuum of care is a governance of entities that coordinate housing services and resources for a certain region. You guys are in what is called the balance of the state. And that is overseen by the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition. What that means? They are responsible for a program called HMIS and our coordinated entry. Individuals that are in, that are homeless, receive an assessment. And it allows us to see where they need to be, what, they, put them on housing, I apologize about this. But it oversees funding. It gives us data. It lets us count these individuals. I'm trying to-
That's okay.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm covering this slide.
That's okay.
So with the balance of state, it covers 101 counties, which are mostly rural. It sounds like a lot for one entity to cover. But because it is rural counties, the homelessness is-
It's divided into nine regions.
Yeah, it's divided into nine regions. And so if, in the next slide, I think that is, yep.
There you go.
Right there. There you guys go. So this is the balance of state. You guys are region three. So your continuum of care is going to be with Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition. And the biggest importance of this is, is we need to know how many homeless individuals you guys have, so that way we can get the proper data. If we're not counting these people, how do we get the funding that we need to help them? But the also, the bigger importance is, is if you see, you could have somebody that comes from Larned, released from Larned, and we're out in rural Kansas. They're gonna probably migrate towards Salina, one of the bigger cities closer. And they're gonna stay here. Well, the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition, they have programs and they have individuals that help get these people back to their counties. So they're not just staying here. We want to get them back to their originating county. We want to get them back to the services that they're used to. We wanna make sure that you guys have, that people from Celine County are our number one focus. You know, we need to serve them first.
Next slide?
Yep. So this is your point in time count. From 2022, there was 166 homeless individuals counted. 152 in 2023. Now, with the coordinated entry list, that is, there were 42 people on the coordinated entry list.
That's not good.
So, no.
Tell them why that's not good.
That's not good because that's 42 people waiting for housing.
And not 100 and 52.
Well, yeah, and not 152. So that means that 110 people weren't counted, or weren't put on this list for housing that are homeless.
And in November, six people were on the coordinated entry list. You're not gonna get housing if you're not on the coordinated entry list. Just so you understand this. That's why I know this is not exciting, to talk about this, but it's important. Because you wanna make sure that everybody experiencing homelessness is on a list. Right? Working towards getting housing and services. It's not just housing on coordinated entry. It's also services. So this is just, wanna finish up with coordinated entry?
Yeah. So with coordinated entry, what that is, is that's making sure that the needs and assessments of individuals that are actually homeless are prioritized. When we think of public housing, anybody that works could be housed, struggling income, whatever the situation may be, they can all apply for low-income housing or Section 8, and that's just a list. Coordinated entry is making sure that we get the most at-risk individuals placed and in the system of care that they need. And again, I really want to point that, I just completely blanked that. I'm so sorry. The biggest importance of this is to get those housed. When Julia was referring earlier that we have individuals that are gonna get pulled first, that are housed in a car. And some people are like, "Well, why they weren't at the shelter?" They don't even have a shelter right now. They have nothing over their head. We need to get them off of that street, from under that bridge, and we need to get them housed. We need to get them placed. They're a priority. The longer they're out there, it's only going to get worse.
I think this is your last slide.
So coordinated entry is a nationally recognized process developed to ensure that all people experiencing a housing crisis have fair and equal access and are quickly identified, assessed, for, and referred, and connected to housing and assistance based on their strengths and their needs. The coordinated entry system for single adults, youth, and families coordinates supportive services and housing resources across the community or a region to form a collaborative, no-wrong-door network that connects homeless individuals and households to services and housing. A coordinated entry program includes four steps: access, assessment, prioritization, and the referral. The best coordinated entry programs are more than a network of providers that speak to each other and send individuals to get the care that they need. They are a fully-integrated crisis response team.
I think we're gonna just go to the last, just really briefly, and then I wanna quickly finish up.
So I do definitely, I, I have heard, as I am the new role with KADAD's For Housing First, I have gotten good and negative pushback. And I really think that it's important to address what Housing First really is. Housing First does not mean that we're going to place this individual into a home and leave them there to completely destruct it and not give them any help. The goal is, is let's get them housed, and they need to have services wrapped around them. Let's help them get them into treatment. Let's get them into mental health care. Do they not have transportation, but they need mental health medication? Well, we have workers that can go out there and go to that door and make sure those individuals take their medication every day. We have so many supports being pumped into the state for mental health and for behavioral health, that there, people should be able to receive the care that they need under a roof, under their own home, and not have to suffer out here on these streets. And yeah. Well, the housing, the Housing First approach views housing as the foundation for life improvement, and it enables permanent housing without the prerequisites and conditions to a typical renter.
So I just wanna wrap up what she's, what she means. This is a really important concept. Housing is the beginning. It's not the end. We see housing as the end. Housing's the beginning. Because once people are in housing, all of getting, getting better, being part of the community, reuniting with family, all of those things begin. Those things cannot begin, really, truly, until people are in housing. So I don't want you to think of housing as being, that's the end goal. We want people to be happy and healthy and live good lives and be part of our community. Not seeing housing as the very, very end. Basically, I just want you to, what we were trying to do in this, you know, in this, in that piece, you have to know who your people are experiencing homelessness. You have to have them on a list. You have to have information. Them just being out? They need to be on a list. You need to have to know who every one of them is. In my community, we've reached functional zero for two communities. We have 300 people on our list. Because that includes people at risk of homelessness also. People who are the highest priority. Then we have people in the mid, in the middle. A lot of those are seniors who just need affordable housing. And then we have people on the bottom who really just need like a security deposit, first month's rent, a little bit of help, a little, a little bit of a, of a, of a hand up. Right? Not a handout. These are just a little bit about our outcomes. We've sustained zero for veteran chronic homelessness for the past five years. What's in our toolbox? And I, what I want is for everybody in the room who was in this afternoon's presentation is, look on here and see what you do have. If this was a recipe for ending homelessness, you have a lot of the ingredients. You have a lot of these things here. I heard a lot of these things today. I know you have good relationships with law enforcement, first responders. I know you have this strong continuum here. You have a lot of these pieces. The goal is to figure out which pieces you have to work on. What are the things that you can strive to improve? This is really my last slide. No one's afraid of change. People are afraid of loss. If you get nothing else today, get that. That's an important, that's an important message. About leadership, engaging each other. I want you all to, when you leave tonight, is to think about what your role is. What are you going to do differently? How are you gonna be helpful? How are you gonna be helping the community, the people who do the provision, who do the services? To everyone that sits here, what's gonna be your role? How are we gonna move this, move this forward, be part of the solution? Leadership comes in moments, little moments. Leadership is always about change, and that change starts with you. This is my slide. This is my contact. You can always contact me. I will be under contract for the next year and a half. Anybody here wants to talk with me, wants to walk through, has an idea, just call me. You don't need anybody's permission. Just call me. Ask me. How'd you do this? What do you think about that? I'm here to help you in whichever way you would like that help. That's my presentation. Can we do some questions?
Thank you, Ms. Orlando.
Thank you.
You, you've challenged us. And as I look through the presentation, I, I felt very fortunate that a lot of, as she pointed out here, we're already doing a lot of this stuff. And it is gonna take a community to work through. So we will, Commissioner Davis, ever make it in here? You will come take a seat, Commissioner Davis? A standing-room-only crowd here is, I guess, next time we coordinate something like this, we will use the Tony's Pizza Event Center or something. So I'm gonna start with questions for, or comments from commissioners, and then we will open it up to the public.
Thank you. There's a, within the community, I know there's a lot of different philosophies, and we have a lot of different options in how to deal with homelessness. I guess the big question to me is, if we had one thing to pick at this time to address the issue of homelessness, what should that be?
What is this? Okay.
So that's, that's a tough question. I think anybody who is in homelessness would always ask for more housing. But I would say one, one need that I do see from listening today is, you need to really focus on a low-barrier shelter because you do have people, and this is not a criticism at all of your services, they're wonderful that you're doing. But you're being challenged by us, you know, not being able to provide services to a certain cohort of people. And my recommendation would, would be, how can you do that? What would be needed to be able to do that? And I'm certainly happy to, to help with that conversation.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. The first pertaining to the low-barrier shelter. Could you go into a little more detail as to what that entails?
So, for me, shelter should be for people that are on the street, in my opinion. And so that should always be, for a shelter, your first priority should be to take people who are unsheltered. And low barrier means that we're not requiring sobriety. We're not requiring you take medication. Now, that does not mean that you don't have behavioral expectations. But I think you can, you know, maybe, do we have to permanently ban someone? Maybe there's a process. There is a negotiation process. And the only reason I say this is because I do this. I will have conversations with people. What's going on? You know, how can we help you manage this better? Maybe there's a modification in the shelter that I can make to make it better for you. Maybe where we have you sleep, or, you know, which, which floor you're on, or different things like that. So it's removing barriers, most honestly. So what I'd like to see is that anyone who needs shelter and is asking for it gets it. Figuring that out, how to do that safely.
Thanks for the clarification on that. The other question I had was regarding your, your Hackensack model of this program. And where does the majority of that funding come from?
The majority of the funding is county. It's county funding. It is a county-owned shelter. We also have state funding, which is supportive services for the homeless. In addition to that, we also have federal money in. We have money from ESG. We have HPRP. I don't wanna go through the acronyms, but there are federal funds. We have some philanthropy as well. We also have a Bergen County Trust Fund, which is a very, very small surcharge on real estate transactions.
So I guess to continue on the, on the no-barrier thing, I mean, do you suggest somehow we put together a new shelter or work with the existing shelters to maybe modify their rules?
I'm certainly not gonna tell you how to do that. What I will say is this. The people that I met today that run shelters do an outstanding job. My, my, my first, yes. I mean, I think you have to do that. My approach, whenever I've had to do modifications, would be asking me what I would need to be able to do what you're asking me to do. And I'm sure they'll have an answer. You know, I'll just give you an example. We recently have had an increase in folks coming in with autism, young adults with autism. That was not a population we were particularly skilled at. We were able to get a partner agency to come in and bring an expert, someone who works with this population, to help connect them to services, much better than we were doing. It's identifying the need and then finding what it is that you need to be able to, to be able to help that. So that would, of course, be my first recommendation. Because honestly, building a shelter is gonna be a lot of money. It's gonna take time. People need to get in now. People need to get in now. I mean, you're going to have sub-zero weather, I think, are it on your heels. So, I think the easiest route would be working with your outstanding shelter providers that you have, and seeing what, what they need to be able to, to make that lift and that change.
And I, I appreciate your, your speaking to us tonight, and you opened my eyes to a lot of things, and I look forward to getting to work on it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I did hear most of the presentation from the hallway.
I believe you.
I felt bad about coming over here taking a seat if everyone couldn't get a seat. Two questions. We, we have found that for childcare, our efforts work best now that we have a single major organizational thrust coordinating things. For coordinating services for homelessness, is it best for a city of this size to have the initial lead group or person be within the city or county government, or a private organization? You know, in other words, does, do you find it best for the city to set up a, a homeless office, even if it's one person, to coordinate things? As there's a lot of public and, and private efforts here. What, how does a city our size get that one umbrella?
You know, it's, that's a really good question. In my, in my humble opinion, I think you look at what's working. If, if you feel that within your community, you have the bandwidth, you have the right people, the right person, the right leadership to be able to do that, then I think that that's the right way to go. I understand the desire to have that be, be within city leadership, and I'm not saying whether that's good or bad. It's tough for the providers when that happens. It, it feels like they don't know if, you know, why, are we not doing a good job? Could we not, you know, so can we give them the opportunity? Is there a way for your existing providers here in your, in your community to be able to rise up? That's why I talked about leadership today. I'm really asking people to not doing what they're doing every day. I'm asking them to do it differently. I'm asking them to be leaders. And what you're asking for is the right leadership. Who's the right person? And, you know, I think for my community, I was uniquely qualified because I'd been doing the work for 20 years in New York City, and it was where I lived. I think people working where they live and having that commitment is very powerful. I know for me it was. My commitment level was just at a whole different level, because this was my community. And it made a big difference to me. It wasn't like I just went to work someplace and came home. So, I always like to see what you have in the house, see who you can develop, see what potential there is. Be really thoughtful about that. That's my best recommendation.
And, and to be sure, here, I, I think our, our role in government would be to support and expand the efforts we have here, you know, not get in the way, but see, you know, how, how can we make it better?
Right. But I will say this, though. What is really needed, though, too, is have expectations. Be clear about them. I have my, you know, I, I have a, a lot of people I answer to at the city's level, the county level, and my agency. Be involved. Know, people should know what your expectation is of them, too. I don't think it has to be one or the other. I think it can be very collaborative. Because those folks, they're going to depend on all of you and your political will to help them move these things forward. It's, it's together. You have to do them together. It's just so incredibly important that you all support each other. It's not one person out in the front. It's really everybody saying, yes, this is what we're doing as a community, and we support that.
Thank you. One other question. As far as mental health services, are those providers and medications provided by county health department, or just public, you know, private donations?
Yeah. Yeah. So, many of our folks are either on Medicaid. We also have charity care in, in New Jersey. So, our folks, you know, if, if they do not have a source of income, will go on charity care and then we'll help them. But I'll be honest with you, if we have people in the shelter, and they're in a pinch, and they need medication, am I going to pay for it? Yes, I am.
Right. As far as, do you provide mental health counseling?
We have mental health counseling on site. But I also think it's really important, because the way the county designed the center was that we were not replacing the people in the community who do the mental health counseling. We gave them office space. They have office space there. So, those experts are coming in and doing it. And some of them got grants, you know, federal grants to do that work in the shelter. Because really what you want is you, it's, you want a place where people can all bring their talents and their skills together, and bring it to the people in a place where they can have a cup of coffee, and they're comfortable, and they're out of the elements, and you're, you're managing primary needs. So, mental health and addiction and all that is critical. It's absolutely critical. But what my point was, too, is, that's not going to stand in the way of someone getting into shelter, though. We always want to make sure that we keep that, making sure that they can get in. Because I'll tell you, too, when people get into shelter, a couple nights of good sleep and food, they stabilize. Many of their behaviors stabilize. They feel safe. You know, they get some rest. I just can't say enough about. So, then, we start to talk, and if they want counseling, it's going to be provided on site. But many of those services are with other agencies. They're not being paid for, provided by the county.
Thank you very much.
You spoke a lot about addictions and substance abuse. We have a strong recovery community here in Salina, and it's difficult to reach these people on the street.
Yeah.
What methods do you have to, to bring them in and show them a better way?
So, and, and again, I, I feel a little bad when I shared this earlier with some of the providers, but when somebody comes to me, you know, for, for treatment, they're getting it quickly. And I think that that makes a big difference. Now, I'll, I'll just give you an example. We had a man coming in, very, very serious alcoholism, has very, very serious emphysema. I, his doctor told him that he wasn't going to survive another winter on the street. And we brought him into shelter. He had a few really rough nights. But we, we knew he knew the information. I met with him very gently, said, "I'm going to keep you no matter what. I'm going to keep you all winter. You're not going to be outside. But when you're ready, we're going to be ready here to help you." I think it's really about working with people where they're at, and letting them know that it's their decision. I'm not making him, but we're being honest, that I think it could be really dangerous for you. Am I going to say to you that it works for everyone? People have the right to make bad decisions, unfortunately. What we can do is provide a, an environment that is as welcoming as we can. That doesn't mean we don't have limits, and I'm not saying that. But I really think that, I think you have to work with a person. And if you, if they, if they have to decide between a drug that has a hold on them, where the addiction's making the decision, they may not right, make the right decision. So, what we try to do is as much as possible, and we'll try to, you know, even if we're keeping them in a chair for the night, so they're not going to freeze to death, and in front of security, so that, you know, we're concerned. We're going to make those modifications. We're going to do the best we can. We also work with probation. We work with parole. We work with our law enforcement. I will tell law enforcement, if you find this person outside, give them two choices. You can go to the shelter. You can go to the hospital. I'm not leaving you outside. These are your two choices. It's really, every person is very individual and very different. I think it's just really understanding what shelter is and what it isn't. It's not my job, okay, to say to a person, you have to make this decision. It's my job to shelter them. And I have to always remember that, and that gets really hard sometimes.
You know, and you talked a lot about bringing people in and out of the cold. And of course, now here we are in the middle of January. That's understandable. But this isn't just a winter problem.
Of course. Yeah.
And, you know, it's a, it's a...
It's, it's an all year, well, I, but I, what I'm saying is this, too. That doesn't change in the summer. There's just a sense of urgency when it's either very, very hot or very, very cold extremes of, of weather.
Okay.
But I, but I do think you have to provide, listen, I just want to say this as, as gently as I can. You know, waiting for people to make the decision, to make better decisions, many people won't make that decision. They're not going to make that decision, and they're going to choose to stay unsheltered. And maybe you're, we're okay with that, but your quality of life struck, suffers with that. Their quality of life. We have to give people options. Housing First is an option for those, you're talking about a certain group of people, right? A number, a smaller number, not the whole group of people. You have to look at best practices. This is a best practice. You don't have to do it, but we know that that works.
You spoke quite a bit about the Bergen County Jail.
Yes.
And the Sling County Jail just recently moved from two blocks away to clear out on the north side of town. And it's been a concern of mine for some time that when people get released, they're going to be out there in the dark in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
Did you kind of look at that situation?
We, we did. So, from my experience in New York City, I should do in-reach into Sing Sing and Bedford Hells in New York. I design programs for people leaving incarceration. My belief is that we do in-reach. In other words, we're working with discharge in the jail before, because they know who's going to be homeless upon release. So, when that happens, they make referrals to the shelter, so we can actually reserve space for that person. So, when that person's getting released, that they're going to come to us. I think that we had to be proactive with that. Because what will happen is you could get released at 2:00 in the morning, and if you don't have a place with us in the summer, when we don't have winter, there's not a bed for you. We would want to make sure that, as much as possible, we were able to anticipate that person coming. And so, that's why we do the in-reach.
Well, we better keep moving along here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the questions.
Are we going to have a mic for the audience, or?
(inaudible).
They're going to come to the podium. Okay. Okay. We're going to take some comments and questions, and as I said earlier, we're going to keep it...
Is it snowing yet? Okay. We have two-hour ride, so not too many questions, I hope.
So, please state your name, and remember, we're going to be cordial and...
Yes, I'll be very quick. My name is Michelle Wetzel. I'm a small business owner here in town. We have Lincoln Park Home Health. So, we do a lot of outreach. We actually take care of, provide skilled services to patients in their, in their home. Nursing, wound care, IV, physical therapy, occupational therapy. We treat people at the park that are homeless.
That's great.
We work with the housing authority to try to get assistance for them. As a small business owner, one of the struggles we're facing is downtown on Fifth Street where our office is, is we've had an influx of homeless people, to the point that my staff are now locking the doors, and we're not allowing people to come in because of the fear that they have when the homeless people come in and are not necessarily willing to leave in a quick manner. Someone was in the office for 48 minutes this week.
Yeah.
And goes in the bathroom and cleans up and does her, does her business. But we try to offer whatever help we can. But what would you, in that instance, what would we need to do as a business owner? And I, I will volunteer our services to the outreach programs here, to the, to the shelters. If you need nursing in the shelters, we're more than willing to help. I've not had any contact from anyone regarding those types of services, but we do, we provide behavioral health nursing. So, we help manage medications and make sure that people stay on their meds. So, if you need something like that, it is available out there. And a lot of people don't know that the service is even available. There are a number of home care agencies. I'm, I'm disappointed I wasn't aware of the meeting today, because I would have loved to, I hope there was a home health agency involved in that, because I think it's a huge part of planning and keeping people in their homes, once you get them in their homes. And we can even work in the shelters. So, again, as a small business owner, we want to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for our employees as well. And who, who do we reach out to for that? I'm new to Salina. I've only been here for about three years. So, I'm not real sure, you know, our only, our only option was just to lock the doors. And I don't want to do that and us turn people away. So, what would be the recommendation for us, for us in those situations? Anybody?
Nope.
I would say probably get familiar with the resources here in your community. And Richard asked, currently in Salina, our showers are unavailable to our unhoused. There was one place in Salina where they could go, they could shower, clean up, do that kind of thing. For whatever reason, that isn't available and hasn't been for maybe a month or so now. So, that's kind of been a problem or an issue for them, not having those entities or places to go to wash up, clean up, because they are in town. So, just probably getting more familiar with community resources. Like, right now, there's unfortunately nowhere for them to go to do those things. But just, I mean, like...
Salina grays.
We do have showers for both men and women at the risk.
Ma'am, ma'am, you need to come up to the mic and, uh, wait your turn. So, we're going to let the experts answer the questions.
So, and, and that is a good resource. One, one thing that we've talked about is the police department is prepared to what we call trespass a person. So, if they're there without your permission, you can call the police department, and we'll intervene and...
And we, you know, we want to provide service. We literally, you know, offer them assistance. And, you know, like you said, you can't force them. Some people want it, some people don't. And I volunteer our services. If anybody knows of, somebody that needs, needs help, or if you need help in the shelters, we're more than welcome. Again, Lincoln Park Home Health, we're right here on Fifth Street. You're willing to do anything that we can, especially with our vets. We work a lot with our veteran community, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Roush. I had, was curious about who could have access to the data collecting system, the CES, whatever, to count people as homeless. What agencies do you have to be referred?
You guys have to answer that. You guys, somebody, yeah, I think she should. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, there are certain people, we're coordinating it this year. You have to be a part. You have to register. You have to be a part of the COC, Chad's Group, the Ashby House, and D-Back are the three agencies that are involved. We've also got a team that we're putting together with the police department to go out and do those counts and that data. But it is secured. It's a government website. The federal government owns the place we're putting the data, so that people have confidentiality. It's not HIPAA, but it's still, there's a lot of confidentiality to it. So, if you're interested, you can always reach out to our office if you want to volunteer. We are doing the PIT count, which is what they talked about, which is one 24-hour period when every community across the nation counts the homeless. And so, it's January 24th and 25th this year. We're heading it up. Chad's coming over this way a little bit. Anyway, but it is not open to the public. It is, it's secured for people's confidentiality.
So, an agency can call you?
If you have a que, if you have a question, like, call me. The people that have to do it, if you get certain federal dollars. So, the three agencies I named are required to participate and have shelters. And then, there's also working with the state continuum of care. We've been organizing. The city's been involved over the past few months in trying to get that count for January 24th.
Treatment centers wouldn't have, would have a count of...
And that would be great. There has to be, it's a complicated system, but if you would give me a call, I'll be happy to connect with you.
Thank you.
We're always looking for help.
Okay.
My name's Stephanie Weller, and I work for a, a resource center here in town. I work for CKF. And one of the biggest barriers we have for housing, especially for women with children, or people who have a substance use issue, when they apply for HUD, or they apply for any kind of Section 8, it's an automatic rejection if they get felon, if they have a felony.
Yeah.
So, how would we change that? I mean, the unhoused would be...
So, one thing that K-DADs currently has, we have a contract with Kansas Legal Services. Any individual can reach out to Kansas Legal Services. We have a program to help with expungements, to help people reinstate their licenses, so they can travel back and forth to work, and try to remove some of those barriers free of cost to Kansans. So, that way, we can basically have less barriers to housing.
Okay. So, there's no way that we could get, I mean, I know that it's a, it's a legal thing, but that's one of the biggest barriers that we see, is a woman, a woman who just, you know, who just gets custody of her ki, children back, and, you know, she just got probation or something like that. And then, there's no housing, because HUD says that if you have a felony that's less than three years old, you don't receive housing. And that's a huge barrier here. Huge.
I just also suggest talking with the housing authority. Housing authorities have a lot of leeway and what, you know, I'll just tell you, you know, we had emergency housing vouchers, and that was a one-year look back. If you have a relationship, or maybe develop one, to be able to talk about these kind of individual cases, I always find that that's a really, a really good approach, because you, you can demonstrate that this, this person's a good risk. And I think that's really what they need to know, too. So, having those conversations, developing those relationships, I also think is really helpful.
Thank you.
But thank you for fighting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. It's great to see a lot of people here. I've got a business downtown, and I have people that breeze in, you know, and are disruptive. I, I understand the homeless, the crisis that we have. I don't want them in trouble.
Right.
But is there a way to contact people other than the police to diffuse a situation, right? I've got, I've got patients in my place, and, and it can be, it can get loud with them, right? Sometimes, and, and they're just confused, and, and a lot of these programs say, well, you have to do this, you have to adhere to that, um, to stay here, right? So this is a multifaceted question that I've got, right?
I hear that.
First of all, is there a thing that you can send to business owners or individuals as to, if something happens to you, here's where to call?
Yeah.
This is, can I get you, can I get you to the food bank? Can, or do you need food? Do you need transportation somewhere? Do you need medication? There's nothing like that.
So, right, so I think one of the things is, you know, I can't answer for the community. I will say this, though. In our facility where people can be all day and get food, we realized that a lot of the business owners didn't know that. So what I did is I did a presentation to the downtown business district, and I designed cards to give them that actually had the phone number and the address that they could, if a person was there, say, hey, this is a place you can get a shower and a meal or whatever. And it gave the, the business owner a sense of like, I could do this. The second thing we did was, we have an outreach team. Outreach teams are very well-trained to be able to deal with, they usually know the people that you're talking about, and they can quickly de-escalate and maybe redirect someone quickly and, and find out, you know, what's going on. So that, that I hope would be another, another idea. We just, we just actually started with a brand-new outreach team, which is actually peer support. And they have a hotline number. We made sure that every business owner had that hotline number. And we tested it out a couple weeks ago. Someone had the phone number, and I said, you know, yeah, and, and they were there on the spot within about 10 minutes-
Gotcha.
-to help out. But I think that's something that you can design internally with your existing services to be able to have, like, what's, what's the response? What do you want us to do, rather than calling the police? Listen, sometimes you do have to call the police, but if, you can never avoid that. And also, if you have information, resources, where you can send them, I think that might be helpful, too.
Okay. Last thing, in my last 15 seconds, is I'm glad that there's like a low-barrier thing, and in hopes that some people don't have to completely adhere, because if, if, if you're a, if you're a drug user and you're out there in and out of the ER, sometimes you're not going to be able to make that decision. Anyway, there you go.
Yes. Oh, that was the buzzer. Thought I did that.
Thank you for coming and sharing your expertise with our community. We appreciate it. I'm Chad Young, Director of the Salina Rescue Mission in Salina Grace, and been fortunate enough to serve in this community for the last 16 years at the rescue mission. Y'all are too kind. Appreciate it. I'm going to get choked up here, because I love what I do. I love our community, and I love our homeless neighbors. They need help. I wish we had all the resources to provide all the help that we could. But because we're limited on our resources, we also have to be limited on the solutions that we offer. And that's an unfortunate reality that we deal with. And maybe that's something you can help me to figure out how to address. I do want to make sure everybody is, is familiar with Salina Grace as it's a newer organization. We do have a low-barrier shelter. It operates November 15th through March 15th. Now, low-barrier, for some people, means a little bit differently for others, okay? When we talk about low-barrier shelter, when we did this as a community, we agreed that there would be a, a .17 BAC level, that if they went above that .17 BAC level, that they would be referred to CKF for detox. And that was at CKF's urging that we do that. Things have changed over the years, and there's limited number of spaces at detox. It's very hard to get someone in at detox. It's also hard to get into many of our treatment centers around here. And I haven't even gotten started, I'm already out of time. We have this Community Resource Center, and our goal here is to provide a central location for all of our resources to come together and wrap our resources around the individual, just as Julia was talking about. So we have already begun this journey, but we still admit we have a long ways to go. We're open to your partnerships, we're open to your help, so we just want to encourage you, if you can help, if you can partnership with us, if you want to volunteer, please come be a part of the solution with us. We want to continue to help our community as well as our homeless neighbors. So thank you all, because I know many of you have partnered with us already, and I thank you for that.
I have one question. Will there be a formal, a formal audit as far as the homeless, homeless people? In your opinion, what is that number today? What would your estimate be?
At any given time, we have approximately 200 people that are homeless in our community on any given night, and that number fluctuates, okay? We probably experience, have 2,000 people who experience homelessness in our community during the calendar year. And if I had more time, I'd go into all the details on how we come to those numbers, but that, that's the big overall picture. Thank you.
All right. I'm getting new at this, Richard Albert Humphrey, 315 South Ohio. If anybody wants to try to change revolving door, I'll direct you to Mr. Young on that. I'd like to see him run. Moving forward, I think homelessness is by design. Last time we were here, I think some of you might remember that I was more concerned about the people that can't pay their rent three months in advance, they're on the brink of homelessness. What do we have for them? Like, how are we preventing the homelessness there? The next one I asked, I went there, we'll get out of that later, but I got way more material for you guys, I can't wait, three minutes. But let's find out the protocol for death in homelessness for the elders, the women that die homeless. And how are they known or unknown? And that's what I'm going into, because as I follow my mom's footsteps in hospice, I'm so nervous. Thank you guys for being here. Your leadership and women, it's, the dynamics are beautiful. Hopefully, we can add some of that to our town. Welcome to Salina, to the position. Tell Ms. Camille Russell, in my journey, she's the one that helped me start it as the Kansas Obundtian. And moving forward, I'm going to do my part. I'm here to fail forward for the next few years before I go UNR, to hopefully come back as a gerontologist. And if you guys aren't familiar with that, it's just understanding the quality of life and enhancing that. And I feel like the first thing we've got to do is have fun, work together. You know, this, this whole grant stuff, we call it the white-collar EBT card. So we need to work together, find the prompts, and move forward. I am quivering. Woo, hi, Mom! But yeah, I'm happy to be here. I've done some great work. I've been Skid Row, I've done good things. And I'm not proud of where I've been, but I'm proud of where I'm going, and I cannot wait to work with you guys. Ms. Tara, thank you for recognizing that numbers don't lie, decisions do. And over the next eight years, if the Salina Police Department can get AA in sociology, that'd be cool. But I feel like we've got a good crowd, I feel like we have a good community, and I'm soaked on us. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna, we have to get on the road. We have a two-hour drive back. I, I can do one last question if it's just for me, but I'm not, let you guys continue. Can we let this beautiful woman in the blue? You have a question for me, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna head out.
Thank you, Julia. I'm here today because each and every face in this building represents a precious soul. And I know that homelessness has a deeper root. And the question is, when your name is stolen by the city, the county, the state, and the United States, and it is tied to the land that you were brought forth upon, how can I reclaim my name that my parents gifted to me, and that was taken from me and has truly left me homeless? Please answer that.
I don't think I have a good answer for that question, but I do believe that, I think there's very little that people can take from us. I think your presence tonight has been overwhelming. You greeted me when I came in. I can't answer that question for you, but what I, what I do hope that you can find is peace and live your life as best you can. I think what happens is that we can become consumed in what you're talking about, which is a very heavy and intense sadness that you have, and maybe other emotions. And I hope that however you can find a way to make peace with that, I think that, that's what I wish for you. I wish, if I could fix this for you tonight, I certainly would, but I do, I do hope for that, because you're a beautiful person, and I hope that that, you can get to that place.
Well, thank you very much. And I would like to say that I would hope that the people, the souls, the precious souls in this room can hear the depth of the root of homelessness, because I can honestly say I love each and every one of you from my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I can't imagine a better way to leave this place. So thank you, everybody, for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orlando, and have a safe trip. I guess they're going to Topeka? But we still have 15 minutes here. If there's anyone other questions for staff or the commission? Renee?
Hi, I'm Renee Gephardt, life, excuse me, lifelong Salina resident. My question is for the commission. Now that we've had this amazing meeting tonight, I think every single one of us in this room has been touched and affected by new solutions and new answers I don't think we've ever been exposed to before as a community. We had the meeting, I think it was last year, at Salina Grace, and it was great, and there was a lot of resources, but nothing that even came close to what we had, got to experience tonight. I want to know, how are we going to move forward as a community, regularly addressing the tools that we've been given this evening as a community, to do the things that we need to do to try to build up our community and do, I mean, we've been given a gift tonight, in my opinion. What do we, what, how's our, how are our leaders going to work with us and give us continual education, give us continual meetings, opportunities like this, to be able to start to find some resolution in our community?
Thank you. I think we can start by continuing this conversation. You know, as you expressed, you know, this was very, very beneficial to have this, and we got people from all, all parts of the community and all, I, I'm just amazed at the diversity of the crowd here. And I think everyone wants to work together, and that's what Ms. Orlando really expressed, and that's what it's going to take. And as far as the city, I think our funding of some of the agencies is some of the best money we're spending right now. Because the city, a lot of these things that Chad does, the city would not be very good at. So we are fortunate we have the agencies.
Absolutely. One other thing I did want to mention, and, you know, just going to every meeting throughout the community over the years, we discuss our housing issue, and boy, did she hit the housing problem heavy, heavy tonight, and opened my eyes to things, and I think our eyes to things, again, I'd never considered before. We have an entire section of this town that needs to be resuscitated, that needs some really amazing people out there writing contracts, ready to rebuild the north end of town with absolutely livable conditions that can be put up and probably house hundreds of people ready to take on that challenge. We are falling short as a community, we are falling short as builders, we are falling short as people who want to provide for their, for their community. I don't want to be accusatory, but boy, there's a lot we could be doing on the north end of town, and I think it's time we start to take these things seriously. Thank you.
And we are very fortunate. We just received a federal million-dollar housing grant to do exactly what you said, to make houses in a specific area over off State Street livable and energy-efficient. You know, that, that's a big problem. We can get people in houses and get them, the rent affordable, but then all the other expenses that come along with it, the utilities, and you all know what goes with having a house. It's complicated. Anyone, any other commissioners want to respond?
The Salina City Commission has an annual strategic planning session, which will be coming up in the next month or two. And this certainly needs to be, you know, a topic that we discuss. Government can't make every problem go away. When you ask, you know, what are we going to do about it? You look at most of the problems we've had in town, the we that gets them solved is you. We can help you, and sometimes we take the lead, but Salina seems to work the best when someone is motivated and, and starts a project, and other people will help. So we really need to see what we can, everyone in this room can, can do. I think we are a little over-selected in this group, in that we probably don't have people who are at risk for being homeless in here. You know, so most of us are talking about a problem that we've been fortunate enough to never have experienced. But homeless people look just like us. You don't always know who they, who they are. But, you know, we will have conversations, but we'll figure out a way to coordinate the efforts. But as they say, you know, the cream rises to the tops. Those agencies that are doing the good work now will probably take the lead, and we'll see what we can do to support them.
I just kind of emphasized what I, what I said earlier, the discussion, keeping the discussion alive, and this forum, like I said, opened my eyes to it. I think as long as, as a community, we all continue to talk about it, and hopefully we can make some strides to take care of it.
Go ahead, step up to the mic, sir.
I just moved to Salina with my wife about six months ago. Don't throw tomatoes, I'm from Portland, Oregon. So there's some dichotomy here. I know the homeless problem because of where I lived for 60 years. I saw it firsthand. I saw the graffiti. I saw it firsthand, I saw the graffiti, I saw the meth pipes, I saw, they legislate sin there. And I'll just say it, that you, first we had the marijuana that's legalized. And in Portland, you could have meth, crack, and coke in your pocket. It's legal. Don't legislate that here, don't break this city. You know, and I come from the other side of the fence, too. I've been in nine treatment programs, okay? I have been in a mission, I've stayed on the other side. What we need to do is accountability. When I was in a treatment center in nineteen ninety-two, all right? You have accountability, you've got doctors and nurses, you've got clergy, you've got drug and alcohol counselors, and then we went to work after thirty days of inpatient, you went to work, you signed out, you come back, you're strip searched, because you know why? You don't trust a criminal. You're strip searched, otherwise they're gonna bring dope and alcohol into that facility. You take a UA. You give fifty percent of your money back to the facility to hold for you, so when you're ready to move out, you have money to move out. Fifty percent of it goes back to you, back to the facility for housing you. There's accountability here. If you do what they did in Portland, and they give you free housing, here's a house, here's a hotel, here's a food box, here's a check, here's a cellphone, you will break this city. You will. And I'm just telling you from experience, you know? And I also know that I picked my brother up off of Burnside, who was a, he died, he died, heroin overdose at the morgue, my son as well. So, I do know what I'm talking about, but at the same time, this is a beautiful city, and I'm not without compassion, I have deep compassion for those in twelve-step programs, those who are homeless. I love them, but don't put on the rose-colored glasses. Most will not make it, and most will die. You will save some, but you will not save them all. Let's try, and let's work together, let's come up with a solution, but at the same time, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
May I have permission to say one more thing about homelessness? With, with all due respect concerning those who are homeless, and those who are on the streets, and those who ride the City Go bus, please take into consideration, serious consideration, the footwear that they wear upon their feet, because that would make a lot of difference in the way they walk, and their structure, their form, and the other physical disabilities that they suffer. So, please take into consideration a good, solid pair of shoes for their feet. Thank you very much.
Three things, real fast, just things that I've noticed, things that I've heard. Everything here has been mentioned, has been very decent. The three things that I've noticed are, the mentioning of the moving of the county jail. Some of the county jails moved over, as of, within the past seven days, the inmates have not moved. It's just information that, that I had an understanding of. The second one is, the Housing Authority has now arrived at, not only is it a felony within the past three years to still have yet to have been housing, it's any drug charge within three years is still having yet to have been housing now. And this is within the past two months. The additional understanding that I have, is, is the only additional understanding that I could arrive, that, that will arrive any sense to any of the understandings of homeless, is to have their own community in coercion with themselves. The homeless people have their own meetings, because the, the additional that they're informed of themselves, the, the, still even they, the additional that homeless people are, are informed of themselves, the additional that they, that homeless people, transients, whatever somebody's gonna call them, can make their decisions to continue on to still have yet to be homeless. Educating themselves through group. It's not alcohol, it's not drugs, it's transient addiction, same as additional people have mentioned, for them to have their own meetings. Appreciate it very much, have a nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Tom Mertz. I live in Salina. I guess, I just wanted to say, you know, and I don't have statistics about Salina versus Portland, but I do have a son who has lived in Portland for ten years, and owns a business downtown, and has had to deal with homeless people with, he goes out the front door of his business, and there's two tents on either side of the front door, you know, and, which makes it hard for clients to, you know, invite clients into your place of business when they have to wade through the homeless place. The thing that, and so he's got a big interest in this, and like I said, I don't have facts, I just have his, what he's found out, and he, what his claim is, is that, contrary to common belief, Portland does not have good homeless services, and that's why they have so many homeless people, because they don't have the services to take care of them. So, they just do all kinds of, 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 just kind of make, try, Band-Aid situations to try to make it work. I don't think Salina's in that same situation. I think we have a lot of services, I think, and I think that, the kind of the solutions that we've heard tonight has given us some good ideas on how to improve those services and take care of this problem. And I just, I just would hope that the, the commission just thinks very seriously about what we've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I would comment, you just brought up earlier about the availability of housing, Ms. Orlando talked about it, with having a felony record, and also what I hear a lot is, you gotta have a credit background to rent something. And many, many property owners, that's the first thing they do, is a, a credit check. And so, between the credit check and the, the felony record, that, that's an issue, and I don't have an answer for it. And it's kind of something to work through. Anyone else?
I would just like to say this-
Your name, please.
Ben Pruitt. I would like to say this is long overdue. This is a lot to process tonight, and this is nine, ten years in the making, and it's, this, this, this is unreal. I mean, I, speechless said a lot, because it's opened the eyes, I mean, there's a lot of faces in here. There's a lot to work here. We see it every day on the streets, Walnut Street Bridge, east of downtown. I mean, we put a lot of money into downtown, and you go over there, you look at the river, the trash is Wind Road, there's people living under the bridges, you know, addiction is, is a huge, 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 huge problem in this town. And we did this, what, a year ago? Why can't we do this every six months? You know, we get a lot of people on the streets talk, Chad, you know, Chad and I've had words before, some good, some bad, but, gentlemen, I don't believe Salina should have a homeless problem this magnitude. You're always gonna have homelessness, but it shouldn't be at this magnitude. People shouldn't feel threatened to walk into Walmart. You know, we had an instance out there a year ago. This, this is long overdue, and I just think that we, we need to have this every six months. This lady presented a lot, a lot, a lot of information, and it's tough to process it all in two hours. I mean, and it's sad that we don't get more of a community, you know, involvement in this, but anyways, I just want to thank you guys. I do also want to say on a side note, you guys are my favorite TV show. I watch you, I watch you guys every Monday, and I was heartbroken when you went to Biweekly. But anyways, you get, I really truly enjoy watching all of you, I really do. And thank you guys for having this, and hopefully, hopefully we continue the momentum to go, you know? So, thank you.
Ben, the, that committee sign-up sheet's gonna be right over here with the gentleman in the purple.
Hey, Mayor, long by, and I brought a pen.
Okay. It is eight o'clock, you know, it, this was a very worthwhile and good time spent, and I would like to first thank the state of Kansas for bringing Ms. Orlando here, and all the city staff that worked to put this presentation together. It doesn't just happen in a whim, a lot of planning, and a lot went into this. So, thank you all for coming.